Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, at 4:40 in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on traditional territory of all Gongqin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin, Inishnaabe, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. Be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous. Item number three, declaration of the cuneary interest. None noted. Item number four, petitions and delegations, there are none this evening. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations, 5.1 council minutes.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following minutes of the public meeting held February 20th, 2024, and minutes of the regular meeting of council held February 20th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous. Item number 5.2, committee of council minutes.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be it resolved that council adopt the minutes of the following week, minutes of the Kirkland Lake Committee of Adjustment held December 12th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous. Item 5.3, local and regional board minutes.
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Dolly Dykens. Be it resolved that council receive the minutes for the following meetings, minutes of the Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce Board, Commerce Board of Directors, held September 5th, 2023, November 7th, 2023, December 5th, 2023, January 16th, 2024, and February 6th, 2024. Minutes of the District Optimising Social Services Administration Board of Directors, held January 17th, 2024, and minutes of the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board, held February 14th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous. Item number six, reports of municipal officers in communications, 6.1, 2023, A Year in Review, Alan Smith, CAO, and as well as Stephanie Dow, Strategic Initiatives and Workplace Performance Coordinator.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to start by, this is the corporation's first annual year in review report, and it'll serve as a probation for our future ones, which will be given annually. We acknowledge the contributions made throughout the year from each department, and the year in review report provides an opportunity for the public council and administration to draw inspiration from these successes and celebrate some of the achievements that happened throughout the year. By regularly reviewing and reflecting on these projects and initiatives, such as the ones presented in the report, it's easier for administration to track progress and adjust strategies as needed, all aimed at enhancing the development and continuation of being the right environment for you, diverse thriving and efficient for the residents of Kirkland Lake. Any questions about specific contributions to this report can be directed to each department director.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Do you have any questions from the floor this evening? Councillor Owen?
Through you, your worship. I just have a comment to make. I think this is excellent. It's difficult with the number of issues that we deal with every two weeks at this table. It's difficult for me as a councillor to keep track of what we've achieved during the year, because you go from one issue to the next. At least we're going now in a planned sort of way, whereas before it was putting out fires. Now it's more planned progression. But having this report is really, it makes me feel good. I can see what council and staff have achieved together through the year. Also, I think it's an excellent resource for members of the public, and I certainly encourage them to read it, because, you know, we often hear, "Oh, what do you guys do? You don't do anything to spend money, right?" Well, no. Here, take a look. And it's only gonna get better as time goes on, you know? So thank you very much to Alan and to you, because I think it's one of the best resources that we have for the public. So thank you.
Anything further from the floor? Okay, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. Be it resolved that report number 2024, CAO 004, entitled 2023, A Year in Review, be received for information.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous. Thank you. Item 6.2, housekeeping bylaw establishing remuneration adjustments for non-union employees, Sean LeCard, Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the meeting council. So yeah, it's a housekeeping bylaw. Given on January 24th, 2024, we had a new a new benefit policy approved by council. And the the previous bylaw was in place as of March 21st, 2021, actually indicated that we were following the benefits of Q26. Now with the new policy passed, we are not following that policy anymore. However, we are continuing to follow the the adjustments, the remuneration adjustments in the local Q26 every day. So the so the bylaw will be brought forward at the next meeting on the 19th, just to make those housekeeping changes to the bylaw.
Thank you.
No questions then?
Any questions from the floor? None noted? Madam Deputy Clerk.
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that report number 2024, Corp 014, entitled Housekeeping Bylaws Establishing Remuneration Adjustments for Non-Union Employees, be received. And finally, that the updated bylaw be presented for three readings on March 19th, 2024.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous. Thank you, sir. Item number 6.3, request to extend 2023, 2024, Winter Ice Season, Bonnie Saffrider, Director of Community Services.
Afternoon. Through you, Madam Mayor, to the rest of council. Extending the ice season at the complex is a service level change, and the only people that can do service level changes is council, and that must be done in a formal manner. So that's why this report is coming to you tonight. We did receive a request to extend the ice season for this year, 2024, and it does go beyond the direction that was given to us in 2018. So in 2018, council provided a direction that the ice was to come out for the month of April, and that was based at the time from a report that we had done for council from a service delivery review from KPNG, which spoke to us about either implementing shoulder ice seasons increases or shortening the ice season. So at the time, council decided not to have any surcharges for shoulder seasons, but to have shorter ice seasons, so the ice would come out for the month of April. We've had a couple of requests since then that council has approved to keep it in for varying levels. So this request is coming to you, because minor hockey's season is a little bit different than it was back in 2018. In 2018, most of the teams finished their league play downs around the March break time. The leagues now take March break off, so that means the whole schedule is bumped a little bit more. So it's not far into April, as you can see, but the first week of, the first weekend of April, there are four teams that are gonna be participating in play downs or tournament schedules. So Minor Hockey has requested to keep the ice in a little bit longer. They've actually requested to keep it in even longer, past that weekend. They'd like to do some wrap-up fund practices for the teams. So the report before you shows you a little bit of financial breakdown to keep the ice in. One thing that was nice, once we started to do the report, once we looked at the utility charges that we have per week, they've actually gone down since we calculated this in 2018. So we've done a number of upgrades to the arena, and we actually calculate every bit of energy used in each of our ice plant items. Chad Bond does a lot of that work. And I'm happy that the, it appears as though our utility charges don't cost us quite as much to hold the group of ice anymore. But there still is a cost. We can't quite recoup the cost based on what Minor Hockey has committed to. If council does agree to extend the ice season, we'll certainly work hard to try to drum up some more interest, to see if there's people out there that would like to have the ice, just to kind of pull that out.
Any further questions? Oh, no. Before I open the floor, I do want to thank you for this. It is such a minimal amount compared to the quality of life for these kids that don't have a lot of activities in Kirkland Lake. And so definitely for my part, I hope we continue to encourage use of the rink and put this price where we can, right? Councillors, any comments? Councillor Owens?
I think it's something council might have to review or starting to review, Madam Mayor. School boards are changing their calendars. They're extending the March break, but most of the negotiations are now to extend it from one day, and then the year after, putting the March break, or autumn break, I guess, in November. So Minor Hockey might have to readjust, and since we are saving money now compared to 2018, and the situation is different. If we're saving money, then, you know, what the reality is different, then maybe some council should consider extending the season till the end of April, with further due to the rule as of 11, instead of having to come back to council every year to ask for small extension.
Thank you. Councillor Ranger?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the report. I like the background as to what was the rationale for it being closed so early, or proceed early? And the understanding that March break is a difficult time for associations or sports organizations to get the kids to be available. So, you know, I think, like the mayor said, the cost is minimal. I'm sure the senior, the seniors who use the ice surface will also be renting some space, or others will have activities and will cover the costs. And if not, it's minimal for the the life of the community and those that utilize the service and the sport all season long, just to get cut short at the end of the season is not really a good idea. So that's great. Thank you.
Councillor Kylie?
Yes, through you, your worship. Just a question, not relating to the arena, but to civic part.
Sorry, councillor Kylie. The motion on the floor is regarding the
I just wanted to know how long it was gonna be open. That's a question.
Okay, that's probably something that can be dealt with after. Yeah. Councillor Owen?
Through you, your worship. Yeah, I'm very impressed with the decrease in the, in the cost. That's a pretty amazing saving. Also, at one time, Kirkland Lake was very well known for hosting NOHA Tournament of Champions, and I'm sure the current executives continues to apply for them. And anybody that's been involved, it's a crapshoot. You put in your application, and you either get it or you don't. You don't understand the reason why it's done that way. But if we can once again start getting NOHA Tournament of Champions back in Kirkland Lake, that the economic input into the community far exceeds the additional costs, the benefits would be far greater. And as for the kids, I mean, I was involved for so many years in hockey, and to watch them at these tournaments, it's amazing. It's their Stanley Cup. It really is. And it'd be nice to see that back again, and the activity in it. Plus, I'm sure Minor Hockey will send out a thing saying, "Hey, we got the most wonderful swimming pool in the world." And then bring your bathing suit, you know? Like, there's other side effects that will help offset the costs, and true. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from members of council? Nothing noted? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Right, so moved by councillor Rad Shaba, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. Be it resolved that report number 2024, CS 001, entitled Request to Extend 2023 to 2024 Winter Ice Season, be received. And that council approves to maintain the ice service at the Dome Abernathy Community Complex for as long as any regular user group requires it, due to regular league playoffs or Northern Ontario Championships annually, charging the rental rates as noted in the town's user fees and charges by law. And finally, that council approves that the estimated sum of $677 associated with extending the 2023 to 2024 ice season be included within the community services portion of the town's 2024 operating budget.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous. Thank you. Item number seven, consideration of notices of motion. 7.1, councillor Casey Owens, investigate installation of water meters on new construction builds in the town of Kirkland Lake. I will have Madam Deputy Clerk read the motion first, before you speak to it. Thank you.
Right. Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Whereas considering the advanced age and state of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake's water distribution system as stated in the EXP Water Distribution Study dated October 2023, and whereas Kirkland Lake has a daily average output of 1,154 meters per resident of drinking water from the water treatment plant, representing more than double the national average of 300 to 500 liters per resident as noted by the Ontario Clean Water Agency, Aqua, in their 2023 highlights presentation on February 20th, 2024. And whereas water meters are considered one of the many strategies the municipality can use to effectively reduce its water consumption, and whereas the benefits that water meters can afford are listed as follows: capital improvement deferral, maximize service life of infrastructure, reduction in waste generation, greenhouse gas reduction, increased public sense of equity, reduction in energy, reduction in chemical costs, and extended equipment time. Therefore, be it resolved that council trust and information will be presented by the end of Q2 of 2024, that explores the possibility of introducing water meters for all new residential and commercial construction within the jurisdiction of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake moving forward. And finally, that administration also explores the possibility and feasibility of having existing residential customers participate in involuntary water metering program.
Thank you. Councillor Owens?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor, to the council. So this this motion comes first result of the two reports we received in the last month or so from EXP and Aqua, as saying that Kirkland Lake's water system is in like, don't, in crisis. There's, we're losing water. We've got a high consumption rate, and there's no incentives right now for residents to change that that way of of doing things. So my goal in presenting this motion, it's not a cash grab. I know when we talk meters, people are, "Oh, no, no, we cannot do meters. That's gonna cost too much money." And it's not my intent here. The intent is to have people realize that we need to do our part to help Gull Lake, to help our water supply, or to not put it in jeopardy. And we may think that Gull Lake will always have water, but 2021, I brought forward a question to council about the low level of Gull Lake, and I was told at the time that, yes, it was very low, exceptionally low for that year. But Environment Canada was predicting a higher than above fall for rainfall, and it didn't materialize. We were also told that we could replenish Gull Lake through the stand, the pipeline to MacTavish, but we're also told that hasn't been utilized in 20 years. So if we turn upon spot, we do not know where the water may end up, may not end up in Gull Lake. So it's not a guarantee that our water supply will be good forever. So I think going down the meter route, and I don't wanna see meters in all existing houses. I know there's a lot of costs associated to that. My goal here is really new constructions in Kirkland Lake. It may be the time to look at what is available. We did get a question today from residents saying, "Well, we took out Aqua flows and what do we do in this case?" Well, in the bylaw that I researched, so it's out of Timmins, when you install a meter, there is a bleeder that goes on before the meter for these situations where if you do need to run your water in winter, because our houses, or a lot of houses are built on rock, that water is a factor into your meter that goes straight back into the sewer system. So you do, you're not gonna get charged for that extra water that's being used. Yeah, I think that's summary of what I had to say.
Okay. Councillor Owen, as the seconder, you have your chance to speak.
Yes, through you, your worship. Our current system is not fair, and we need to look to fairness as well when we're looking at new builds. For instance, a senior citizen could buy a house under our current system, and their neighbor could buy the exact same house and have six kids, and they would both be paying the same in water. And not, under our current system, you're not paying for what you use. You're paying by the number of rooms. And that creates a lot of headaches for staff. I know that personally, because my wife was a water building clerk for many years. It's also, there's no built-in system, no incentive to decrease your water use. With a meter, there is. And I know in the past, councils explored it, and they explored the cost of putting meters all in every house. Well, it wasn't feasible. But by starting it with new builds, it would be feasible. And I also received the same information as councillor Owens did, person concerned about a bleeder. There are more than one way of stopping your pipes from freezing. Bleeder is just one way. And some of these ways are quite simple. It's just a matter of getting your pipe off the basement wall. You only gotta have a half-inch base. Others are more complicated. But I don't want people to think, "Well, you want me to do it through a bleeder." No, there are other ways. So I strongly support this meter situation, that the cost of the meter would be borne by the person purchasing the house, so there'd be no cost for taxpayers, and it will help the entire town in the long run, in terms of where and our infrastructure.
Thank you, just for, yeah, for my portion of this conversation. I do support the idea of investigating it. I don't think we're really deciding anything tonight, other than it's worth starting the conversation. Considering the information that we've been given by EXP and by Aqua, I do think it's a valued conversation that we should have at this table. So I definitely support this motion. Councillor Ranger?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor, to council. I think one of the key points here is that we're looking at education, not speculation, whether that be speculation of the general public, or members of council, or employees. We'll be looking for a report to make, you know, factual decisions, and look at, you know, those individuals who may have questions about the current system and how that will affect their specific situation. And also, I want to, I want the public to understand that as councilman, we have accountability and responsibility, and that we need to look forward with our water situation based on these reports, and that these are the responsible options that we have before us at this time and date. And we need to look at them and make decisions that maybe not everybody will be happy with. But certainly, we'll look at the report and look at what our accountability and responsibility is to the community going forward.
Councillor Shaba?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, your worship, but through you. You know, the whole idea of having meters is a very great one. But I believe the timing, the timing, to me, is a problem. I agree, we have to do what we need to do to conserve water and save money. But we have a big fish right now, which is losing 50% of our flow. I think we should put in all our efforts into that, putting meters in place, investigating that, and some to put it in place. I don't think we'll make a difference if we don't try to address the bigger issue of 50% flow loss that's occurring right now. And I'm not too sure where the staff's gonna find time to do this investigation. It could well be that another money spent on consultants to look at that, which is again, cost that I will find very difficult to support. So the general idea of investigating, looking ahead, for me, I would think it's more, something more for the next council to really look at, and let's fix some of the bigger problem that we have now, which is the water loss. So that being the case, I don't see myself supporting this motion. Thank you.
Anything further from other members of council? Nothing noting? I don't think. Does anybody want the motion to be read and full again before we go ahead and vote? Everybody's comfortable?
We have a recorded vote.
You certainly can.
So recorded vote on the part of councillor Dykens. Councillor Janice Ranger?
Aye.
Councillor Lad Shaba?
Uh, no.
Councillor Casey Owens?
Aye, excuse me.
Councillor Dolly Dykens?
No.
Councillor Rick Owen?
Aye.
Councillor Patrick Kylie?
Yay.
Mayor Stacey White?
Yay.
The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Circle the other sides. Make sure you circle initial listening. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, for the next item, I will have Acting Mayor Shaba take the chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Deputy Clerk, item is 7.2, councillor Casey Owens, Regulations, Regulation and Education on Lawn Watering. Madam Deputy Clerk, can you read the proposed motion, please?
So moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by Mayor Stacey White. Whereas considering the advanced age and state of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake's water distribution system as stated in EXP Water Distribution Study dated October 2023, and whereas Kirkland Lake has a daily average output of 1,154 liters per resident of drinking water from the water treatment plant, representing more than double the national average of 300 to 500 liters per resident as noted by the Ontario Clean Water Agency, Aqua, in their 2023 highlights presentation on January 20th, 2024. And whereas there is an increased demand for water during the summer season when normal household use is supplemented with outdoor watering, and whereas regulations would greatly assist the town's water treatment plant in maintaining adequate water pressure and storage tank levels, which is especially important during periods of low rainfall due to inadequate replenishment of source water. And whereas the Government of Canada suggests that the best times to water a lawn is in the early morning or early evening, when there is generally less wind and heat. Therefore, be it resolved that council requests that an information report be presented by the end of Q2 of 2024, that explores the possibility of introducing a summer opener water consumption bylaw. And finally, that administration develop an accompanying educational program to encourage residents within the jurisdiction of the town of Kirkland Lake to improve water usage behaviors in order to reduce the overall water consumption.
Okay. Thank you very much, councillor Casey Owens. Can you speak to the motion, please?
Yes, thank you, through you, acting chair. So this one again is, it came out of the EXP report and the Aqua report we got last council meeting. For many years now, I've observed, you take a drive in the summer, and you watch people watering your lawn in the middle of the day. It's 35 degrees outside, sprinklers are going on, and Balsam is a good street where you can see down far, and you see a lot of sprinklers going up, and half of that water is being wasted. So some, from some data I found, this was American data, but it applies in Canada as well, it's from EPA. 50% of water use outdoor is lost either through evaporation, wind, or runoff due to overwatering.
50% of water use outdoor is lost due to evaporation, wind, or runoff due to overwatering. Kirkland Lake got a water problem. So we need to, and the reason why I want the bylaw is because if we don't have something to force change, people don't like change. We all remember when the recycling bins came into Kirkland Lake, the big blue bins. Oh, no, no, not going to work in Kirkland Lake. It works everywhere else, but Kirkland Lake will not work to have an armed garbage truck pick up a garbage can and dump it inside. Five years later, it works. And there's a lot of these bins on, in, in town. So you know what? Change is good sometimes. So if we have a bylaw to educate people as to when to water the lawn, what days to water the lawn, it will help our water source. So you're not watering your lawn every day in a specific time and you're not wasting as much. So that's the, uh, the essence of this one, is education, an education program. Uh, with a little bylaw to reinforce the education program.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Stacy White. Uh, can you, uh, speak to the motion, please?
Thank you, Acting Chair. I do think Casey hit the nail on the head with this one. Um, I do believe everything that we can do to protect our water systems because we only have Gull Lake and potentially if the pumping station does work, McTavish, if we're lucky. Anything we can do to educate our people is important as well. And so honestly, this is kind of a no-brainer to open up the conversation on what we can do as a community to protect our water systems.
Okay, thank you very much. I can't see the rest of the councillors, but anybody has anything to, uh, say, speak to this motion?
Uh, Councillor Ranger has her hands, Councillor.
Yeah, Councillor Ranger, carry on, please.
Councillor Kylie first.
Uh, through you, your worship.
Oh, sorry, pastor. Councillor, I will call it Pastor Kylie. Yeah, okay, Councillor Kylie, go ahead.
Um, I'll support this motion because, uh, we're one of very few, uh, communities that doesn't have a bylaw regulating the, uh, watering of lawns. Especially, uh, I have to agree with, uh, Councillor Owens. I've seen people turn them on at eight o'clock and at five o'clock in the afternoon when they get back from work, they turn them off. It's a total major waste of water and cost to produce that water. Uh, I think, I think you'll find that people, neighbors will, will start policing each other and saying, hey, look, you're not supposed to have the water on this day or it's from noon, eight to noon. And, uh, it, it will work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Councillor Ranger, no.
Councillor Ranger, yes.
Thank you, through you, Deputy, no, Acting Mayor. Um, I also support this bill. I think every member of this community has a responsibility to use water in a responsible manner. And for those that want to continue to, you know, not consider their responsibilities, they'll be held accountable with this small bylaw. And like Councillor Kylie said, I think, uh, neighbors will encourage and enforce. Um, and it won't necessarily be the responsibility of our bylaw officer to go around. But, you know, um, some, you know, information, knowledge and encouragement to, um, uh, be responsible will go a long way. Thank you.
Okay, uh, do we read the motion again or can I call the question? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Call the question.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Anyone against?
No, no.
None? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Acting Mayor Shaba. We do appreciate that, even from miles and miles away, you're still a good chair. So thank you, sir.
Well, you're welcome, thank you.
Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws. 8.1, bylaw number 24-001.
Uh, moved by Councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor, municipal clerk, and sealed with the corporation be affixed thereto. A bylaw number 24011 being a bylaw to set the municipal water and use water rates for 2024 prior to the adoption of a budget.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. 8.2, bylaw number 24-012.
Moved by Councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councillor Raj Shaba. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor, municipal clerk, and sealed with the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number 24012 being a bylaw authorizing the execution of a facility use agreement with Teen Northern Throttle for Family Events, TNT, for the use of the Kirkland Lake Airport for annual events.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number nine, questions from council to staff. There were none submitted prior to the meeting. Item number 10, notices of motion, any notices of motion from the table? There are three this evening from the mayor. The first one, as noted on the agenda, is amendments to the OSHA or O H S A to clarify the definition of employer. The next one is urgent need for increased funding to libraries and museums in Ontario. And the third will be the need for complex passes for a local entity. So those are the three. Item number 11, 11.1, updates from members of council. Anything from members of council? Councillor Owen?
Uh, through you, your worship. Um, Councillor Kylie and I attended the DSA meeting, uh, recently. And like we were just introduced to tonight with the, uh, year-end review, uh, they also have a similar process, um, and, and I'm sure it's, it's posted online if anybody wants to read the full one. But they had two representatives to work at Zach's crib, which is a facility located in, uh, Tumismeen Shores. And what the facility is, is, uh, trying to do is, uh, it's trying to end homelessness. Uh, it's one of the efforts that DSA is making in, in this area. And it was noted by the staff that people are homeless for, for many different reasons. Uh, mental health, lack of income, uh, some people choose that as, as a lifestyle. Um, but, and there are other reasons, of course, too. Um, and it is hard, often hard for staff and, uh, to work to build relationships with these people. And, uh, in the last two months, they've had 35 people, um, mostly from Tumismeen Shores, uh, stay at 12-bed, uh, capacity. Uh, they have seven, uh, returning guests and, uh, they use a holistic approach and, uh, they try to build relationships, uh, so people staying there can be empowered and, uh, and get out of homelessness. Now, one of the things that they do is they work with both professional and volunteer, uh, agencies, uh, CMHA, NAA, uh, any, any of the agencies down there that deal with mental health addiction uh, and, and other issues that, that the client may have. And, and they said that, uh, they want to be a beacon of hope to others. So this is a new program, it's just started this year. Um, it seems like they're making a difference. Uh, and, uh, the report was very positive. And I'm sure as the program goes on, the program will develop and evolve as they get a, a better handle on all the needs, the specific needs. Um, so I just wanted to report that, um, and say that, you know, it'd be nice if we could get something like that in Kirkland Lake. Um, most of our homelessness, I believe, is hidden. It's, uh, couch surfing. I know a number of years back, I had a person who was doing that, living in my house for a while. I have another friend that couchsers. So it might be nice if we, you know, maybe next DSA will encourage them to bring something here. Thank you.
Councillor Kylie?
Yeah, just to add to Rick's, uh, report, uh, the board approved the request to donate, uh, an Olympic service, uh, 2016 Ford Crestine and, uh, Crestline ambulance to Round Lake, uh, and area fire department. Uh, this is, I think, the second one they, they've refurbished and, uh, put to use. Uh, they're not worth a heck of a lot, but they can be refurbished and, uh, put back into, uh, working condition. So I congratulate, uh, the group out at the Round Lake Fire Department for their efforts. Uh, there was a number of applications that came in, but they were the successful applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from members of council? Uh, just, uh, as I promised, I will paint my speaking notes briefly from now on. Um, the Office of the Mayor continues to, uh, build engagement with the community. I have, was fortunate enough to meet with the Embers and the Sparks last evening as part of the celebration of their World Thinking Day. And, uh, the town of Kirkland Lake presented that with, uh, little pins from the town of Kirkland Lake and it was very well received. Today, um, the Director of Development and Act of No, Enterprise Services, I will get it right, I've been saying it all day, um, joined the staff of the three pharmacies in the community um, to celebrate Pharmacy Appreciation Week. Uh, and they represented each with a certificate and swag from Kirkland Lake, which was very appreciated. We brought pens because in healthcare you always need pens. So that was definitely appreciated. And as the year continues, we will look for ways to continue to engage with our community members and make sure that they know that they are the ones that build Kirkland Lake, not us at this table with them. So thank you for that. Madam Deputy Clerk, I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councillor Rick Owen, seconded by Councillor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Additional information, there was none this evening. And we will now take a 10-minute recess before moving into closed session. We are now back from recess and now we'll move into closed session.
Moved by Councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Councillor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved at Councilor Hearn and Cameron at 5:35 PM. Pursuant to session 2392, the municipal law 2001 as amended to discuss personal matters of a unidentified individual, including municipal or local board employees for the following, uh, reason. Item 13.1, CAO Performance Evaluation Summary.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you. We'll now reconvene into open.
Moved by Councillor Raj Shaba, seconded by Councillor Dolly Dykens. Be it resolved with council reconvene to open session at 6:04 PM.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number 14, matters from closed session, there are none this evening. Item number 15, confirmation bylaw.
Moved by Councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councillor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor, municipal clerk, and the seal of the corporation, uh, be affixed thereto. Bylaw number 2413, being a valid proceeding of council, held at its meeting, held from 24th of 2024.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous. Thank you very much, folks. Oh, sorry.
Moved by Councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Councillor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved in this regular meeting of council, June 11th at 6:04, or 5, 5:00 PM.
All in favor?
Bye, everyone.